We're pleased to call to order the regular meeting of the West Valley City Council this evening. Let the roll call show that all members of the council are present except for Councilmember Steve Vincent, who has asked to be excused this evening. We have a scout in our midst today, and so we'd like to invite him to come up to the microphone and tell us his name and where he goes to school and what badge he's working on today, please. A little public speaking opportunity.
I'm Angus Carter. I'm here to work on citizenship in the community and communications, and I go to Salt Lake Gardens Caffey.
All right, thank you. Good to have you. And our opening ceremony of Steve Newton will be led by Councilmember Donna Christensen. Councilman?
Thank you, Mayor.
Maybe.
The problem with these is she can't see the light behind the iPad. So I found a problem finally. Thank you, Mayor. With the recent events and looking back on my years as an elementary school principal, I found a YouTube video with the help of Councilman Vincent, and I'd just like to play that tonight as our opening ceremony. So we'll turn the time to Jake.
Thank you. Thank you. By the way, special recognitions. We recognize the one scout here that was here. Are there other scouts with us, sometimes not in uniform? I'll spot them as well. Ah ha, I see. I got a couple there. Do you mind coming to the microphone and telling us your name and what badge you're working on and where you go to school, both of you?
I'm Alex Hoskins. I'm not working on badge. I got lunch with my brother, and I go to Robert Frost Elementary.
All right, thanks for coming. Don't you love it when they're nudging and pointing?
My name is Nick Hoskins. I'm working on my Eagle Scout, and I'm doing a citizen and community pair of badge, and I'm coach at Eagle High School.
Great. Good to have you both. Good future Eagle Scouts here. Council, we have the minutes of December 4th for your consideration.
Move for approval of the minutes of December 4th, 2012. Second?
Any discussion there? All in favor of approving the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Minutes are approved. One of our favorite things to do here is to recognize great people in our community. Once in a while, we get the privilege of giving what we call the Essential Peace Award, just like how every puzzle has critical pieces, so our community does as well. And we have had a beautiful Essential Peace nomination submitted by Jan Johnson, and we are so thrilled as councilmembers to look over that and be thoroughly impressed by Stan and Joyce Hunt and what they've done for our community. And Councilmember Tom Nguyen has volunteered to read that on behalf of the mayor and council this evening.
Well, thank you, Mayor. As the mayor has said, I'm honored to read this Essential Peace Award for Stan and Joyce Hunt tonight. And Stan and Joyce, are you there tonight? Please stand up ready, please. I will read this, and I just, again, just wanted to know I'm honored to read this for you tonight. In summary, throughout the years my three children were attending Jacqueline Elementary, I was actively involved with volunteering at the school in various capacities. Officer Del Anne Wright approached me about organizing volunteer for the new Safe Passes program that West Valley City was starting. That is when Stan and Joyce came on board, and they did a fantastic job. When the last of three children entered Junior High High School, I left my volunteer activities at Jacqueline, but Joy and Stan stayed on with Safe Passage. I would see them in the mornings manning their post and welding their beast. At some point, the program ended. They allowed Stan and Joy to keep their vest and ID, and they continued keeping the children of Jacqueline safe. And so they did. Many parents have approached Stan and Joyce to tell them how much they appreciate them keeping an eye on their children. Joyce recently had a leg operation, and she has been unable to continue to watch. But Stan is still going strong. I would like to see their efforts. For over the 14 years or so, they have been out in all kinds of weather, having provided a safe working environment for children, for schoolchildren, recognized by West Valley City. For these reasons, and on behalf of the countless children, the Hunts have helped keep safe for over the last 14 years. Please accept this mayor and city council, a small token of our appreciation for your many years of loving service to your city. You are an essential piece. Thank you very much, Stan and Johnson.
We'd be honored to shake your hands. Do I start here with Councilmember Lang, who's worked the circle? Thank you, Stan and Joyce, and thank you to your neighbor Jan Johnson for turning you in, so to speak. It's good people like her that help us know of the great people like you out there and doing the great things. We hear bits and pieces, but sometimes it takes a good neighbor like Jan to put those words together and bring it to our attention. So thank you all so very much, and know how much that you are appreciated. I think in light of recent events nationally and the tender opening ceremony we had, our hearts are full of love for protecting the dearest and smallest among us, those kids. And that's what you do. That's what you do. That's what the Hunts do. And that's what you guys have been doing for 14 years. So thank you so much on behalf of a grateful city. And because we're so grateful, we won't make you stay for the rest of the meeting. You're welcome to get on with your evening, or if you want to stick around, you're welcome to do that too. It's up to you.
Joyce and Jan has to go to work, so we just will walk out.
We'll let you get on your way then. That's the least we can do, so thank you so much. We come to item 7 tonight, which is our comment period. And Jake, do we have anyone sign up this evening? Excuse me. Now that the sneeze period is done, we'll go to item number 8, which is our resolutions. We have a few this evening. And for the sake of you scouts, every item on our agenda we've discussed previously in a study session or work meeting, and so if we move rather quickly, I know that we've had at least a week to consider every item on this agenda. And tonight in our formal meeting, of course, we make any last-minute changes or approval or disapproval. So let's talk 12-161 first. Mr. City Manager, what do we have there?
Thank you, Mayor. We have a resolution that would approve a software maintenance agreement between Highland Systems Incorporated and West Valley City. Highland Systems bought out Sire Technologies, which currently does our document and management, our automated agenda, our plan review system. The maintenance agreement change here is basically in name only recognizing that the new company owns it. Doesn't change our cost or the terms of our maintenance agreement.
Thank you. Now, just a question. Sire was located in our Lake Park Business Park. Do they still have a presence there?
I think you might be thinking of Spillman.
Spillman, I'm sorry.
Yes, and Spillman is still there.
Just seeing if you're...
Sire is a West Valley City...
Yes. The where they're located, the location, I don't know.
I don't know whether the location is, but I do know they advertise themselves as being from West Valley. I'd like to visit with them.
Well, that counts for something. And this is in our existing budget, as was mentioned. Councilmembers, what's your pleasure on 12-161?
Mayor, I move approval of resolution 12-161.
Second.
Okay, motion is second. Any discussion there? Okay, all in favor of approval of 12-161, say aye.
Aye.
Passes unanimously. Mr. Pyle, 162, please.
Thank you, sir. In past years, we've had a very successful program that was largely generated and built by a former councilwoman, Margaret Peterson, called the Community Education Program. We're up for renewal of that program, and you have before you an agreement that would commit the city to $35,000 a year across a five-year time period. That is an annual fee, by the way.
Okay, thank you. Council, what's your pleasure on this one?
Motion to approve resolution 12-162.
Second.
Thank you both. Any discussion on this one? Okay, all in favor of 162, say aye.
Aye.
That stands approved unanimously. 163, please.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a resolution that would authorize the city to enter into an agreement with Greg Curtis for lobbying and legislative initiative needs during the 2013-2014 legislative session.
Okay, thank you. Council, what's your pleasure on 163?
I move for approval of resolution 12-163.
Second.
Thank you both. Any discussion on this one? Okay, all in favor of approving 163, say aye.
Aye.
That also passes unanimously. 164, sir.
Thank you, sir, and this is another contract along those same lines for the same purposes with RRJ Consulting for the same upcoming year.
Thank you. I might just add on those notes, we appreciate the good job the staff does in working with the professionals there to protect our city's interests and advance the cause for us up there at the Hill each session. Council, what's your pleasure on 164?
I would move for approval of resolution 12-164.
Second.
Okay, any discussion to that motion? All in favor of approving 164, say aye.
Aye.
That also passes unanimously. 165, please.
Thank you, sir. The police department has been looking at and researching ways by which we can improve their filing system, and by improving the filing system itself, I'm talking about electronically and access-wise. They have found such a system that they propose that we purchase, called CopLogic. This will not only help them improve their filing system, but also allow easier access to our residents out there in the city to that system.
Okay, thank you. Council?
Move approval of resolution 12-165.
Second.
Okay, we have a live motion here. Any discussion?
I just think this is going to be a great tool for us to involve our residents and our entire police department in further combating crime, and so I think it'll be money well spent.
Okay, thank you. Any other thoughts? Okay, all in favor of the motion approving 165, please say aye.
Aye.
That also sounds unanimous. Mr. Pyle, 166.
Thank you, sir. This is before you a letter of intent and agreement with Salt Lake County and West Valley City to participate in what's called the Green and Healthy Homes Initiative Compact. And this is basically an agreement and a program that would help forward housing, various housing initiatives that we haven't hitherto been involved with. As you know, we have a housing authority, and we're closely involved with many of these programs. This isn't just ourselves in Salt Lake County who's involved in this, also other governmental entities such as EPA, CDC, HUD, Health and Human Services, Department of Energy. Doesn't commit us to any costs or any specific projects, but merely names us as a member and agreeing to participate in the program, basically.
Easy enough. Thank you. Council, 166, what do you think?
I would move approval of resolution 12-166.
Second.
Okay, any discussion to that motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Also passes unanimously. Mr. Pyle, 167.
Thank you, sir. We're pleased to bring before you what we are entitled the first in, or are entitled in the First Amendment to the theater sublease agreement. This is an agreement between West Valley City and Hale Center Theater, designed to extend their first term of commitment, which ends at the end of 2016, and also to facilitate their presence there in the existing facility as well as aid them and support them as a community in their proposed expansion of their project there in the Decker Lake area. We're very pleased to bring this. We've been working on this a long time. I know the council as well as the staff has put a lot of thought and effort, and we're just happy to have it here before you. And I know the Hale Theater Group is awaiting it eagerly, so we turn it to you.
Thank you. Council, what's your pleasure with resolution 12-167?
Just to make a comment, of course Hale is under lease with us under contract already through the end of 2016, and we're happy to have them here. They've been an important part of our city. And I'm just thrilled that they have come to us with a request to amend that lease to extend it out 22 years through 2038. And there is no reason in my mind not to welcome them and accept them and be grateful that they want to stay in West Valley City for more than two more decades. I know many people that attend Hale Center Theater, and I know some of the actors that have worked there. And it certainly is an important part of our community, an important part of that district in particular. And with that, I would move for approval for the West Valley City draft dated December 18th, 2012, of the First Amendment to the lease.
Thank you.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, so we have a live motion on the table. Any discussion to that motion?
I think it's adding on to Councilmember Bueller's comments of, you know, there's been a storied history with the Hale Center Theater hosting events from the Olympics to the Stanley Cup that was there, as well as having just a month after month of quality productions there. And so if the partnership has been thus good up to this point in the short time that we've had them here, going all the way to 20-plus years into 2038, there'll be exciting things to come.
Okay, any other comments?
I agree. I enjoy the presentations and the theatrical presentations they've had, and I look forward to seeing many more of those same caliber theatrical presentations in the future.
You know, you say future, 2038, I'll be 62 years old, so it's good that we have an opportunity to keep Hale Center Theater in West Valley City for decades to come. Just for the sake of you scouts, when we constructed the original agreement with Hale Center Theater years ago, we set it up where the city built the building and had a bond on that building that covered the cost of construction. But the Hale Center Theater that's in that building has paid the monthly rent, which perfectly matches the bond payments, and their current contract expires in 2016. And ironically, the bond payments are paid off in 2016. So a penny of taxpayer dollars has gone to pay the bond of that. It's been completely paid for by the theater, and yet what a wonderful thing that's been for our community to help the restaurants nearby and the whole entertainment district thrive. And some may not know that Ruth and Nathan Hale's first play was done back in the 1930s in the old Granger Ward House. And so they have deep roots in our community, and this is a historic step we're taking today to give Hale Center Theater the opportunity to stay in our city through 2038. So with that, Ms. McHenry, let's do a roll call vote on this one, just for the history of it. But before we do so, Mr. Pyle has some final words.
Yes, sir, thank you. I actually forgot one point that I wanted to bring up and ask the council's guidance on, and also just wanted to clarify a point as well. The point that I forgot was that in Section 2, under Definitions, we're asked to establish an amount to capital improvements cost, which we have left blank. There's two ways to approach that. One, to put in there a sort of a not-to-exceed amount. Another way to approach it would be to just give by motion as part of this staff authority to negotiate that and define that. Just so you know, we're thinking, just from a round estimate sort of standpoint, that it needed capital improvements to that property after the first term. That 20 years or so of its life will be roughly $500,000. So that's the first question I have.
And that's just your maintenance of new carpet and paint, just the things that you wear and care...
Roof, you know, any A-trac system, stuff like that.
Okay, so I'll go back to the maker of the motion and see if he wants to add on anything.
So if we move not to exceed $500,000, then if it does exceed that, you could come back to us with a special request.
Yes.
Okay, well, I would move to amend the motion to include that in Section 1.2 CAS that read not to exceed $500,000.
And does the seconder of that motion agree to that? Who was the seconder of that motion?
The second? Let me.
Okay, so thank you.
Then the other point of clarification I just wanted to ask, make sure I'm understanding clearly, Mayor. We have an amendment to the lease as proposed by the Hale Group, which is before you. If I understand the motion correctly, the amendment would be accepted as the Hale Group proposed it without any amendment or... I know there was some discussion that was held earlier, so...
That's not what I heard. I heard...
The motion was to approve the West Valley City draft...
Oh, I'm sorry, okay.
...to 2012.
All right, very good, got it.
So the very latest draft.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions or clarifications? Okay, Ms. McHenry?
Mrs. Lang, yes. Mr. Bueller?
Aye.
Mr. Hume?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Aye.
Mr. Christensen?
Yes.
Mayor Winter?
Aye. It's close between the yeses and the ayes, but since they mean the same thing, the ayes have it. And history is made. Let's go to resolution 12-175. Mr. Pyle?
All right, thank you, sir. Let's see here. We have before us an agreement with Rocky Mountain Power to provide for a grant of right-of-way easement on our property over adjacent to and bordering Westridge Golf Course. They are willing to offer compensation in the amount of $209,000 for that access in this agreement.
Okay. It's always nice when you can collect money instead of spend money. Council, I have a hunch what you'll do on this one, but what do you formally want to do on 175?
I'll approve our move for approval of 12-175.
Second.
Okay, any discussion there? Okay, all in favor of approving 12-175, say aye.
Aye.
That sounds unanimous. Mr. Pyle, we have some items on the consent agenda tonight.
We do, thank you, sir. So the first one, and I know we normally don't address these separately, but it seems appropriate in this particular set of items. We might do that. So the first resolution is to ratify the appointment of Mr. Clintepius Gilmore as our new judge in our justice court.
Okay, thank you. This is an important part where executive and legislative functions come in to helping the judicial function get on their way, and we do that by ratifying the city manager's appointment with this new justice court judge. And so let's take a motion first and see how this one plays out, and then we may have the new judge-to-be, Gilmore, who's in present, say a word or two.
Motion to approve resolution 12-168.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion there?
May I? Yeah. I know Mr. Gilmore is going to be a very good one for our city because he's been here and he knows our program and also knows our city, and I think it's wonderful to have him here, and I believe he's going to do well for our city.
Right, thank you.
Mayor, I just wanted to, I guess, point out and reemphasize what you had said is that, you know, it's been, you know, five long years now that I've sat on this council, and this is the first night to where we will have that separation of powers really come together, where we have an appointment from our executive go through the legislative, and then have an independent judicial to have, you know, render judgments and decisions on different things that go out there. And so for the scouts who are there, or, you know, anybody that's a student of political systems, I think this is a very historic night. And I think it's also nice to have Mr. Gilmore to where this body is familiar with him and his work. And also, I just wanted to... And so when he comes up, you know, just after, I'd love to hear some of his insights as to why he wanted to embark down on this road and, you know, some of what he hopes to get out of the position and what he thinks he can contribute to it as well. But I also just want to give a word of thanks to those that served on the committee and along with our city manager to make this appointment. I was able to be down at City Hall when they were going through this process and was able to peek in on the room, and it was a who's-who collection of judicial minds that were in that room to go through the process. And, you know, it made me feel good that, you know, our next appointment went through that rigorous screening process through the committee that was formed. So look forward to the vote and to hearing from Mr. Gilmore in a few minutes.
I'd also like to add that I have a son who has worked as a justice court clerk in several cities across the Wasatch Front. And when I told him who we were proposing to replace the first judge that he worked for, he was ecstatic about the replacement. So he has worked with him as a staff member, and the staff members are excited about this appointment also.
Well, let's see if it becomes official. All in favor of accepting the motion of 12-168 to ratify the city manager's appointment of Clintepius T. Gilmore as our West Valley City Justice Court Judge, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that was very unanimous, so... I don't know if we say... You can't say judge-elect, because we don't elect you. Judge-to-be? Judge-to-be, you're not sworn in yet, but Clint, why don't you come up and say a few words? Oh, he brought a speech, guys.
Yeah, you know, I am a lawyer, and that's a little bit scary to yield the floor to a lawyer. You might be here a while, and your butts might start to get numb. Yeah, I'm excited about this new opportunity. I've lived in West Valley City for 18 years, the better part of 18 years. I live three miles from here, right off of 5200 West, between 4100 South and 3500 South. I don't come from West Valley, I don't come from anywhere. My father was a career military, as was my wife's father, but my wife's father ended up retiring here to West Valley City in 1993. And I followed my wife after spending two years on foreign soil, learning a foreign language, preaching gospel principles, right? So I came here to Utah to find my sweetheart again. I had met my wife whenever I was 13 and she was 12. I've known my wife that long. Yeah, it's an interesting story, but longer than I'll take your time tonight to explain. But whenever I came here in 1994, a year later, my wife's father was killed in a car accident. Traveling on I-15 near Woods Cross, coming back from a ward camp out, he was, there was a head-on collision, he was killed. He was the father of eight children, my wife is the oldest of those eight children. And that's where I established my roots in West Valley City, is the response of the community to my wife's family. We had people who came to the eight, and they were strangers here. They'd only, they'd lived here less than two years. But people would come by, in fact, an old saintly man came by once a week with bread and other goodies for about six months, and we thought he was trying to hit on my mother-in-law. We didn't know who this guy was and what he was about until later we found out his name was Ned Winder, who, it's not your uncle, it's your grandfather. He wasn't trying to hit on my mother-in-law. He was.
Well, he kissed her, that one surprised me there. He kissed everybody, so.
But a good man, a very good man, a saintly man, a caring man, a man who adopted my family into this community. In fact, I don't know Cory, if you're related to Clark Rushton, are you? Okay, well, Clark Rushton enrolled Taylor, ended up becoming her home teachers. And so they cut down trees for her, fixed the radiator on her car, always. In fact, Clark just suffered a stroke, I heard, and hurt his hand pretty bad. Another saintly man, right, in our neighborhood. Our ties go back to that. As a military kid moving every three years, you don't establish roots. And I didn't have real intentions on settling here in Utah. I wanted to go back to California, that's where I went to high school, and it's a lot warmer there. But seeing that, seeing the community surround my wife's family that way, left an impression. I'm big on loyalty. I'm big on loyalty, and those people earned my loyalty, my respect, my love. And so I love this city, and that's why I work in this city, that's why I live in this city. I can afford now to live someplace else, but this is where I want to live. So my wife, we've been married 18-years now, we have four sons. My oldest son is 16, my youngest son is seven-years-old. Two of my boys played for Hunter High School this last year. So I'm a local boy who is excited about the opportunity to influence my community from the bench as opposed to being a prosecutor. This is what I've, this is where I've geared my career for the last, I don't know, five years. I've been an attorney for 10-years now. With that, I'll take any questions you have or any other comments. See, you didn't even know that your families knew my family.
No, we've all learned a few things tonight, Clint. Any questions for our new judge-to-be? Okay, well, thank you so much for coming and for your family, and we're thrilled that you have chosen to not only invest in the community, but to stay in the community, and as you're successful and continue with your career, we appreciate you continuing to get back to your community by having your family be a pillar of strength in West Valley City. So thank you for all you do, and best of luck. I guess you go to judge training school, or what do they call it?
Yeah, it is, Judge McCullough quit calling it judge finishing school. But what it is, is you do have to go through a process where you have a training over a five-day period, and you actually have an exam at the end of it and have to pass that exam. I'm not worried about it.
Hey, you pass the bar, you can pass that. Well, all the best with that, and you'll be sworn in and be official soon enough. So congratulations, and we appreciate you taking the time again today.
No problem. Thank you, Mayor.
We have some other appointments tonight, and, see Wayne, do you want to go ahead and...
Do you want me to go through these individually, Mayor, or?
You know, let's do this, since we normally don't spend a lot of time on the consent agenda, we are making, ratifying a number of city manager appointments, and I know that some of those who are appointed are here today. And so I'm, and we normally take the consent agenda as a group, which we can do the rest of them as a group, but let me just read each of these, and if you happen to be here, please stand up so we can recognize those who are here. So on 169, it's the Audit Review Committee.
I can't tell you, Mayor, on that one. Nobody's here except those of us that are here at the dais, so you don't have to go through those.
Alan, Cory, Don, Wayne, Dean Lindell, who's not here in Cindy, Adam, okay. Lane, we know you guys. Okay, 170 is the Cultural Arts Board. And that one, I'm trying to see which attachment, has a nice list. Here we go. We have Ross Olson, who's also our executive director at the Cultural Celebration Center, King Stan Ross. Paul Isaac, sitting back here, our assistant city manager. Natalie Grange. Sarah Staley, I saw Sarah here. Joe Dean, there's Joe. Susan Klinker. Steve Vincent, who normally sits here. And Deanne Wadsworth, and they form our CAB, as we call it, our Cultural Arts Board Executive Board. So thank you, if you all can sit down, and we appreciate those of you who have served and look forward to your continued service. 171 is the Arts Council. And we have on the Arts Council our Chair, Sarah Staley. And of course, you'll notice that the Chairs of these councils all serve on that Cultural Arts Board. So we have Sarah, Johnny Hayes, Steve Hyde, Sal Jansen, Jean Mars, Steve Vincent, Catherine St. John, Susan Klinker, Michael Christensen, Jeff Olson, Blair Randall, Bob Clements, and Trish Clements. So we have a good, robust Arts Council. Thank you, Arts Council members who are here, and those who aren't here for your willingness to serve. We have the Cultural Celebration Center Advisory Board, which includes Susan Klinker, Ernesto Quico Conejo, Drew and Leslie Drury, Carol Edison, Margaret Peterson, Paul Ross, Craig Thomas, here in the back. Come on, Craig. And Anna Cutler. So we, there's Anna over there. So we appreciate our advisory board that spends many an hour helping out over there. Then we have our Sister City Committee, 12-173. The Chair, there's Joe Dean. And we also have Roseby Barker, Terrence Chan, Don Christensen, Kevin Condi, Shirley Florence, Karma Hicks, Kathy Jen, Wendy Jung, Paul Mackey, Enrique Sosa, Lila Wright, and Ling Ling Chen. And so we appreciate our Sister City Committee members and the efforts they put into helping those relationships we have in Taiwan and Mexico. So thank you for your service. And then finally, we have our Historical Society. The Chair, Deanne Wadsworth, and members Harlem Bengeter, Bill Barton, Michael Christensen, Pat Rushton, Nikki Wadsworth, Blake Dalton, and Mike Winder. And so I know from firsthand that it's a great group, and we appreciate their service. For those of you scouts, other community members, we're always looking for ways to have West Valley residents more involved, and these are good unpaid voluntary committees, but they're a lot of fun, and if you're ever so inclined to get involved in these or other city committees, we certainly welcome that. So with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the remainder of the consent agenda.
Mayor, I would move that we ratify the remaining one, two, three, four, five, six items of the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion there? Okay, all in favor of ratifying the remaining items of the consent agenda? Say aye.
Aye.
Sounds like that, too, is unanimous. Any need for executive session tonight, Mr. Pyle?
No, sir, thanks.
Okay, then we come to item 11, which is to adjourn, but before I adjourn, we saw some scouts slipping late. And so is there a senior patrol leader that wants to come up and at least tell us your name and what you guys are working on tonight? We can't let them get out that easy.
My name is Drew Loret, I'm the senior patrol leader for 1362, and we are here working on our citizenship in the community merit badge.
Awesome. Well, thank you, and good to have, good to have you gentlemen here. We appreciate the many members of our community that volunteer and serve, and those with ties to our communities that invest a lot of hours here, whether you're employed here or have other interests here. You're all part of the fabric that helps make West Valley City a great city. So thank you so much. With that, we'll come to item 11, and we will wish you all happy holidays and adjourn this body until 2013.